All right, calling me to order. Order two. As Chair of the Select Board due to, no, excuse me, as the Acting Chair of the Select Board, due to the COVID-19 coronavirus crisis and in accordance with Governor Snoot's emergency order number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this board is meeting electronically using the, utilizing the Zoom platform. We previously gave notice to the public how to access this meeting using Zoom and instructions are provided on the Town Hall Lee's website at leeh.org. If anybody has a problem with access, please call 603-659-5414, extension 312. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, also please state where there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which was required under the right to know. Katrin?
Here, hello. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, anybody in the room with you?
No.
All right, and I'm here and nobody's in the room with me either. So, the first order of business is the presentation by the Town Hall Renovation Committee. So, we will turn it over to the Chairman. Who is me, still. And John, could you share your screen with the presentation, please? So, the Town Hall Renov- All set?
Yes, all set.
So, the Town Hall Renovation Committee, Town Hall Renovation Committee was formed to address the renovation and modernization of the Town Hall building. And in addition to that charge, the Select Board added other town buildings and other amenities to that particular charge. Next slide. The committee members are Pat Jenkins, Benjamin Jeans, Mary Woodward, Laura Gunn, John Tappin, and myself. And the Town Hall Renovation Committee would like to propose some additional meetings. Today's meeting, we're going to present our Town Center building recommendations. And we're proposing a second meeting to present capital improvements funding plan, the CIFP, if you will. That's going to be an involved process of showing the tool that Mr. Tappin and the rest of the committee have helped develop. And I think it'll be quite telling in terms of what we can do and what we can't do, and what we can afford and what we can't afford. So, it's a very good tool, I think. And we're also proposing subsequent meeting, probably a third meeting, maybe a fourth. It's a meeting with the Select Board and the Department Heads to discuss the CIFP details in terms of more information about each of those particular items, maybe additional costing information and things like that. So, that's what we're proposing. Hopefully, the Select Board will be amenable to those particular suggestions. And the next slide, I turn it over to Mr.
Tappin.
Tappin, yes. Thank you, John.
The towns, just to go over, the Town Center buildings that we're talking about are the Town Hall, the Tool Shed, the Library, the Museum, the Annex, the Parish House, and some office space to be built. Next slide is going to be presented by Ben Jeans.
Okay, thanks, John. So, there's, there's two components that I'll be just going over here on these next few slides. One is called Town Center Site Construction Capital Planning. And I think one of the things we want to really reinforce to everybody or stress is that we are using the lease and the lease renewals for the current Town Office Building, that, that nine-year window, as kind of our planning horizon for how we're approaching the Town Center capital improvements and sort of this building renovation and possibly even building construction, new construction. And this includes all the activities that would be going on in the Town Center, including the, the library and some infrastructure improvements. Okay, John, next slide. I wanted to basically highlight what we are talking about with these next, these next couple of slides. It would be sort of the infrastructure that supports the Town Hall renovation, the library expansion, the fact that the Fire Department is looking at this area for cistern installation for fire protection, and then a new Town Office when the new, when the, our lease terms are done. On top of that would be then entrances to Mass Road. We would be proposing there'd have to be two entrances to the Town Center area from Mass Road to the State Highway or 155 Highway. And then lastly, this, you know, it's very important that we, while we're doing all this, that we have a master plan for this town, what we call the Town Center land, the, the land that we purchased from the, the Lee Church Congregational. So, in, in, sort of in trying to keep an idea of, of how to approach this nine-year window, there's three phases of construction that we've come up with for the Town Center development. And so, these need to be sequenced and once again, as we were trying to figure out how, with all the different things that are going on there, you know, what would be the best way to look at these improvements that we need to be making to the Town Center area, knowing that the library's got their own activities going on, you know, the historical society's reusing the Annex, the Town Hall has an opportunity to, to be renovated or reused, and then what can we be doing to move some of the projects along over these next few years as part of this construction activity? So, the first phase, and I do list the cost estimate, and I outlined the, you'll see the, the years there. So, what we call Phase One, which would be years 22 and 23, fiscal year 22 and 23, is a new entrance from Mass Road between the Annex and Town Hall, just so you know that, you know, the state would require us to get in compliance with a, a safer entrance to our, to our Town Center when we would start working on some of the projects there. Once again, we would, all these activities will require that we expand the parking lot because of losing spaces with the new entrance construction, as well as the fact that the library is also looking to be doing some additional renovation and, and expansion. And then lastly, with a lot more detail that has to follow on this, but it'll be discussed later by John, is that, you know, we would need to be putting in a new well because of the setbacks from the, from the wetland and the, as well as there is no septic system currently, and this has always been discussed about us needing to have a new septic system. Total estimated cost for that is a hun, is $187,000, and all the, all the costs, all the costs that you will see today are in 2021 dollars. So, Phase Two, which is in years 2025 and 2026, we would put in a second entrance on Mass Road over near the Parish House. If you just think of the idea of where, when John showed the drawing, think of there being a loop road coming in a Town Hall, looping behind the Annex, back over, and then coming back out on the Lee Hill side. We had originally had that same sort of loop in the Town Center, the, the previous work done by the Town Center Vision Committee. So, one of the other reasons why this second phase is needed is that there would be, there'd be some additional parking put in, as well as setting up for the Fire Department to install the cistern. And then lastly, in all the conversations we had with Fire Department and the Police Department and Public Works, the fact that just this loop road needs, you know, needs installed for emergency vehicle access, you know, plowing, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And then on Phase Three, this would be, and you'll see this, we've got a, a, a schedule figure later in presentation, but you'll see this Phase Three is, the last piece of this is the final parking and driveway for a new Town Office Building, and then any other septic system hookups, utility quarters, and hookups from the actual Town Office Building. So, go ahead, John, we can go to the next slide, which is kind of a summary slide of the, of just the, the site construction activities. So, there, there was a memo that was provided as a pre-read for this presentation, but, you know, the, the takeaway from this site construction development planning is that it's a pretty detailed process. There, it needs some detailed planning on the long-range side, as well as capital, capital investing over the next several, several years. So, you know, this is, look at this as sort of a draft. We've taken some time to thoughtfully try to figure out how these things work and how we can make them work, knowing that there are some independent activities and projects going on at the same time that we're not necessarily involved in, like with the library or the Fire Department, things like that. So, more planning will be needed. And so, think, you know, some of the construction may change over, on what year it might happen, but I think it does show that we, we need all nine years of that lease term that the, that the town's in right now, just to sort of make this happen, just from a project sequencing standpoint. Okay? So, the next, the next couple of slides is just to basically now talk about the buildings as part of the Town Center. So, there was another memo that we'd prepared called a Thought Piece Memo, which is sort of the disposition of the Town Hall and a new Town Office. So, I've got a summary of the memo for both of these. And so, let's just look at the first, the first one, which is Town Hall. So, right now, you know, we've come up with basically three options for Town Hall. One is close it and mothball. So, and there's a net, a cost estimate to that, nothing's free, so there is a cost estimate if we even want to close it up. And the idea here is that, right now, the Town Hall, I consider the Town Hall an asset, but if we don't do something with it to either mothball it or, you know, look to try to reuse it and put some money into it, it will clearly become a liability and fall into disrepair. And two, you know, it's an asset that we have on our books as, and it's insured and everything else. So, clearly, there's a, there's a, there's some decisions that need to be made for the Town Hall. The second option is, and I've heard this being discussed a, a little bit more, is that, well, can we be using it now that the Town Office folks have moved out? And, you know, it can be reopened with some improvements, some limited use, there'd be some capacity limits subject to approvals. There is a change in use going from a business office to sort of a meeting thing, so there are some, there are some actual steps need to be taken. So, we've put, we put 50 grand, $50,000 as an estimate to actually reopen the Town Hall for town use. And that would, in the, laid out in the memo is for some of the things that need to be done there. There are some cosmetic, as well as some structural things that need to be done. And then the last option is, which is what we got together as a committee by the Select Board with a charge by the Select Board originally was to look at the renovation of the Town Hall and what all that would entail because of the work that's been done already on the historical report that we did and started working with, with the engineering company to come up with a cost estimate. And this is to actually renovate it, repurpose it to the historical standards, use it as a town and public multi-use venue, and therefore, we would, it would be renovated and structurally improved to, to have larger meetings, public meetings, et cetera. And we've put an order of magnitude increase here of, of half a million. And right now, that estimates, you know, half a million to, to 600,000, depending on if we want to use the second floor and do some additional things in there. So, it's all, it all depends on what all we would want to be doing in there. But obviously, that would, because the building is on the historic, historical register, there, we are eligible for some, some grants and funding that way, too. But bottom line is, it's a half a million dollar venture to, to do a complete renovation of the Town Hall. Okay? So, the other part of the Thought Piece Memo was just the Town Office. So, just quickly, I'll get through that, and then we can move on. So, once again, this town, what we're calling is a new town-owned office building, following the life of the lease where our current Town Office folks are over there at the Daily Building. We made some planning assumptions and did a little bit of a basis of design. So, the idea is that where would a new Town Office Building go? Location would be at this new Town Center, which is what all this planning is about. Energy needs, well, we're looking for the Select Board and the town to, to maybe set some policy and some, some, you know, goals around when we do new buildings and even multiple buildings for a place like Town Center, should we be looking at renewable energy sources to power these multiple town buildings? That could be solar, it could be geothermal, but it's a, it's an important thing. And we get a lot of questions when we do have various town get-togethers to talk about these sort of kind of projects. You know, the space needs and growth expand, and growth and expansion, you know, the, it's just phenomenal and amazing what's going on in the office world. I imagine Julie can, you know, fill us in more, and we're going to be really wanting the town, our town staff to be telling us what works and what doesn't. So, I call it the post-COVID design, better records and file management, but, you know, allowing for adding more meeting space, future staff growth. But the other thing is, what's going to work going forward? Do we need to have more open, common space for, you know, spacing when people come to pay their tax bills and, you know, et cetera? How do we want to set up our meeting rooms? You know, all these sort of things in this post-COVID world, you're going to see a lot of new and innovative office planning. It doesn't mean that the buildings will be smaller, but it means the space may be managed totally differently. The other thing we should be thinking about is allowing for more meeting space from the standpoint of if we don't do anything with Town Hall and use it as a future meeting room, then this new building would actually, we would need to allow for some meeting space to expand there. The environmental footprint, you know, we, I, I mentioned before about a master plan for the property. The idea is when we purchased the property from the Lee Church, it really did a great, what I would call sort of, you know, the front porch part of the town there whereby we're connected all the way up to the church, all that road frontage, and then it abuts our, all that other additional open space property we've had behind there. So, we're just talking about a master plan for the property, which is, which includes this Town Center, and then how we might include some amenities on this property for town trail access, what sort of energy planning, if we would get into, say, a solar array or something like that, how we might cite that at the property, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, the idea here is location, our needs for power, what kind of space needs and growth do we, do we do for a new building? And it's always important on the environmental footprint, you know, the two ideas there are for, for the building are, you know, a, a smaller carbon footprint, and then what is our environmental footprint going to be with landscaping, et cetera? Parking, pavement, et cetera, those sort of things. And the last thing here is the, I just listed as a cost range, these, these are 2021 dollars. We're using the same square footage as we're current, as we currently have over at the Daily Building. That could be plus or minus 10, 10 to 20% based on how we come out of the, this post-COVID world, is one and a half to $2 million. So, the last slide of my little piece, John, you can, you can go to the next slide. So, just to reinforce that our group, we assume that we've gotten, there's nine years of planning, planning opportunity here to use the nine years. But that includes a lot of stuff that has to happen, capital funding, sequencing of this infrastructure construction, critical path scheduling, so all these building projects are done cost-effectively, that we're making sure that utilities, et cetera, things like that are being installed at the right time, we're doing the proper, just stick up for, you know, utility connections, all those sort of things. And lastly, we're asking that the Select Board, you know, give some serious thought around the energy and environmental policies for the town, because there's a great opportunity to, if we do this, you know, kind of a comprehensive Town Center development here, that we want to do it smartly and take advantage of sort of a, you know, the proper footprint around carbon and environmental. Okay, so those are the two, those were two more detailed memos that were sent around to everybody, just a quick summary of those things around phasing and sequencing of the construction, and then the options that we can all be thinking about for the Town Hall and for a Town Office Building. That's it, then I have.
The Town Center Well. Town Center Well is located right behind the Annex. There's a sanitary protective area around the well with a radius of 125 feet. Wastewater disposal systems and some other hazards are excluded from this area. In this 125-foot radius, it depends on the water use at the Town Center. This is sized for the full expected use, including office building, the Town Hall being meeting and function space, and allowing for some expansion of those. Wastewater piping can pass through the protective area if it's at least 62 and a half feet from the well and is an approved pressure-type pipe and is watertight tested after installation. Road right-ofways, driveways, and parking areas must be at least 50 feet from the well. And that's where the problem is. With the museum remaining in place, the 50-foot exclusion means that any connection to expanded parking would have to be by a drive that passes behind the museum. And we think that's not anything that anybody would want to do. It would have to be not just two-way traffic, it would also have to be sized so that fire equipment, fire engines could drive through there. Surface water setback to find a new place for the well, the well must be located at least 50 feet away from surface water. So, we have a proposed new well location to keep the well close to the existing buildings and provide more freedom in septic system location, while also preserving as much of the parcel as possible for future needs. This location behind the library is proposed. To estimate the new well cost, the length of this connection to a pressure tank in the schoolhouse basement was used, although this is not the ideal path from well to basement. If a pump house were used instead of the basement of the schoolhouse, that pump house would have to be located outside of the 75-foot setback, because it's only wells and well casings that are allowed to be within the 75-foot setback, the only type of construction that's allowed within the 75-foot setback. Again, that, that length there was done just for costing. It's certainly not ideal, because if the library wanted to add on after some addition, well, that piping is in the way. The next slide is going to be presented by Mary Woodward.
So, outside funding sources, we did this research primarily with the Town Hall in mind, but it would also relate to the Parish House. And going forward, I would anticipate also there will be quite a few more energy efficiency opportunities that would relate to any new building. We assembled the list by searching online and by talking to people in other towns who are involved in rehabilitation, building rehabilitation projects. So, basically, we looked at categories of donated in-kind labor, fundraising activities, external government and corporate sources. To summarize, I don't think we identified anything that would be a major source of funds coming in at one time. The L-Chip is a matching grant. There's a lot of competition for that grant and a great deal of work related to getting the grant and in interacting with the L-Chip people. The Moose Plate Grants are 10,000 a year and seem much more straightforward, but only 10,000 a year. The others also are smaller amounts. And I think that what I sensed from talking to people in other towns is that it takes a very concerted effort and a coordination between committees like the Friends of the whatever building with the Heritage Commission, with the town, to both be successful in application for the grant and also then to successfully execute the grant according to the standards that are specified. Okay? There were also some small corporate grants, but the, again, not big dollars.
Town Center Building Options. We considered 11 different scenarios. In all of those, the library continues as a library with additions as needed, and the museum continues as a museum with no additions and no relocations planned. The scenarios could be, came down or divided into three scenario groups. The first was putting an office addition onto the Parish House. Second group was all an office addition added to the Town Hall. And the third was a standalone office building. Those scenario groups are subdivided, coming up with a total of 11, by which subset of the administrative functions would be included in the office building or the addition, and which of those administrative functions would be in some other building, like in the Annex. So, you can see that in, in all of the scenarios that we considered, the Selectman's Office was in the office building, whether that was the standalone or an addition. But in some, planning, zoning, and building inspection were in a separate building, and in others, the town clerk and tax collector was in a separate building. And in the case of the smallest office building or smallest addition, both planning, zoning, and building and the town clerk, tax collector would have, would have to be both planning, zoning and building and the town clerk, tax collector would have would have to be in other buildings. So the building option decision. We concluded that an office addition to the parish house is not recommended because of complexity and uncertainty. In rehabbing the parish house, there's a lot to consider. There's issues with the zoning inside setback. There's it is a big project. If the zoning inside setback can't be worked out, the building has to be moved. So when we looked at the uncertainty in costs and the scheduling complexity, we decided not to recommend that option. An office addition to the town hall, we rejected because it would require moving the tool shed. The tool shed is on the state register of historic places. There would be little to no room for expansion of that building, that addition. The office and the library parking needs would conflict. And the largest setback, which would be large enough for all of the administrative functions would intrude into the side and the wetland setback. It would intrude about nine feet into the wetland setback, reducing that from seventy five feet to sixty six feet. The smallest addition would not intrude, but then to the administrative functions would need to be in other buildings. Those four were the major reasons for rejecting that option. But in addition, there was also the concern that the appearance of the buildings squeezed into one space. That's all the buildings, town hall, this addition and the library would not look good. And the mass of the largest addition would be likely to overpower the library's schoolhouse, which is a significant historic element at town center. So the recommendation is a standalone office building, which would be sized to accommodate all of the administrative functions. For the parish house. Remove or demolish your parish house have been suspended until July first, twenty twenty three. To date, no clearly viable use has been identified since the purchase. And by clearly, clearly viable, that's a pretty strict requirement. It means that that it would the use of the parish house would meet some previously identified need. And it would do it at a cost comparable to other solutions. And the ideas that we've come up so far, none of them meet that that high threshold. So we think the public input should be obtained. And we should encourage submission of multiple ideas in order of preference. So that we would, if if somebody really works on it, we don't want to restrict them to just submitting one idea. So for parish house public input, what we're suggesting is that the solicitation of public input, the information it would contain would be a brief history of the parish house with a probable link to a more complete history. A listing of the recent history and the situation, including that the parish house came with the purchase of the four point six seven acres of land approved by the voters in two thousand eighteen. The parish houses listed was listed on the New Hampshire Preservation Alliance's seven to save. We have a completed conditions assessment report that was funded in part by the New Hampshire Preservation Alliance. The parish house is listed on the state register of historic places. The solicitation would contain instructions for responses, which we anticipate would be accepted via email, letter and website. And we're suggesting that would go until May thirty first. Is still to be set up, how the email or whether it just be some form on the website. The solicitation, the contents of it would be submitted to the select board before being distributed. And afterwards, the responses would be compiled and published in aggregate. Town center building timeline. This is a working document, it's not a completed plan. And as we go through it, you'll see that it's a working document because there are some to be worked out. The office building has a three year lease with two extensions, extensions possible. The library project may proceed in two stages, the addition and then the renovation. And for reference, here's next year's voting day. We have two years, I mean, sorry, one year in which to complete the nine year plan. We have about a year from now to complete an application to L chip for the town hall. L chip process from the time you submit your intent until the grant is awarded, takes about seven months. After that, if we receive a grant, then we could final details of the design could be completed and town hall rehabilitated. Site development is pictured as proceeding in three phases. These bars show a range within which the work would be done. And you can see here a sequencing mismatch between the completion of the library addition and phase one site development, which provides the new well, septic system and parking for the library and town hall. On this schedule as shown, the library addition would be completed. They would complete doing the landscaping around it. And then the next year that would be torn up to put in the new well. So there's some details to be worked out. And that just emphasizes that this is a a working document. The office building design and construction would be completed, planned to be completed before the end of the lease. So that with some margin, so that we'd be comfortably able to leave the leased building and turn it back over to the owner without any additional costs. And that's the presentation, so we now have time for questions or comments. I mean, maybe at this point I turn it back to Scott.
Yeah, so if anybody that's listed has a has a question or a comment, you can just speak. If there's any attendees that want to speak, if you can raise your hand. And Julie, if you would allow them to voice their comment or ask their question, please. No questions, no comments? Okay, I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing. Nobody has anything.
I have a comment, I really appreciate how well you guys organized that and put it put it in such clear, precise, easy to understand format, absolutely excellent, thank you. I'm also interested to hear what Annie has to say with the library. I know she's concerned about how that fits in. Are you there, Annie?
Yes, I'm here. We've met with with a couple of people from this board and also with the Conservation Commission concerning our upcoming project and realize that the phases are going to have to come, the various situations are going to have to be dealt with as far as the siding and everything else that's going to happen within the town center. We're obviously very happy that plans are coming forward for the whole town center. It's come along, it's been a long time coming. And we certainly are going to uphold what we can. Thanks for the question, Katrin.
Yeah, it's great news to hear that that can work together.
No other questions? Okay, so.
Did you, did you want to talk about how you decided on the location? I know there's been some concern about other locations in town. Is there any way to to quickly just explain why that location was first choice?
In terms of location, are you talking about the town office building?
Yeah, well, yeah, and and how that works together.
Well, we thought in terms of, just like the last committee, which Ben mentioned at some point in terms of the town center vision committee, it kind of works with the particular plan. It can share parking with the town hall, hopefully the renovated town hall and the library. So it kind of kind of uses those particular assets. Because we're thinking in terms of during the day, you know, people are going to be going to the library, going to the town offices, maybe some meetings at the town hall. But then when evening comes, you know, I know the library stays open a little bit. But of course, the town hall is going to be, excuse me, the town offices are going to be probably closed. And the parking can be used for the town, the town hall function, whatever it happens to be. So it kind of like maximizes the use of that particular asset. And also the big question here, at least for me, is what do you do with the parish house? You saw those slides in terms of asking for questions, there's some things that we've thought of. But we thought we could ask the public in terms of, maybe they had something we've never even thought about using that particular structure for. So of course, then that that particular, if you keep the town, the parish house, then they can use the parking and amenities as well. So that was the thought process, and that's just my opinion. The committee doesn't have an official response, but that's the conversations that we had, so.
All right, Scott. I think we also ought to point for the answer to that question back goes all the way back to the facilities committee.
Oh, my goodness, yes.
Which was three, three or four committees ago.
Something like that.
And the facilities committee, in looking at that question, evaluated eleven options and with thirty two criteria. And by their rating system, the number one choice was to keep everything at the town center if additional land could be purchased. And in their final presentation, their first choice, because it had come up in their evaluation as number one, was to have everything at town center. But the fallback, if land could not be purchased, was to put an office building on Stevens Field. But in the eleven options, that one came out seventh out of eleven. So their fallback was to fall back from their first choice to the seventh choice out of eleven. And in evaluating why Stevens Field came out seventh, the only place where it had a strong advantage over the first choice of keeping everything at town center was that the land at Stevens Field was already owned by the town. And because the situation we're in right now is we were able to purchase the land at town center. So instead of having only just a little over an acre, we have six acres. So that's, I think, I think that's the the more definitive answer.
Thank you.
So in terms of yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
But I had one comment on on tack on to John and maybe Katrin. Just just to reinforce that, once we started lifting the lid off of this and and looking at these other things that need to needed to happen, it really did call out for some better planning and scheduling. Maybe scheduling is a better word than planning. And and I think Annie just referenced it after she saw the 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 schedule that John put up. There are some things that people need to get in a room and sort of figure out, oh, you know, maybe we should put the well in sooner than we think we should because we don't want to put it in after if the library's doing, you know, just that sort of thing. So it does require a level of what I it's called the critical path scheduling. But that's when you just, that's when everybody kind of signs on to this being a project and you can do that. So because then you're in agreement that some of these things are happening, you put them on the schedule and you start working it. So I I I think that we as a committee really, you know, we've just thrown a bunch of stuff on here and tried to do the best we can. But it is a it's a draft and it needs a lot of fine tuning, to to say the least. But we think we have a lot of things on there. And but it's kind of this cascading sort of effect of once, once something starts going, a lot of, a lot of other things have to fall into place, so.
I think I think it's important to recognize that can be looked at two ways. You can look at it as, oh, no, there's all this stuff we have to work on. And we've got to do it all, figure it all out at once. Well, I think a much better way to look at it is it is actually fortunate that all of these things are in play, all of these buildings are in play over a relatively short period of time, less than nine years. And that means that instead of coming up with piecemeal solutions to things like solar energy, you can plan for all of the needs. And I think you can arrive at a at a much better solution by looking at all the pieces there. And recognizing that because of the office building lease, we have both a limited time, but we have what looks like a reasonable time to focus on. The real issue is the cost and the scheduling, the cost. And that's two weeks from now.
Well, i- if the select board is amenable, because that that's the next phase of this. And I know Katrin, you're you're the only one we're really talking to here. Because I've been part of this, but the idea is to have another meeting and to present the C I F P, the Capital Improvement Funding Plan. Because, you know, all this sounds wonderful, hopefully you think it sounds wonderful, if it doesn't, you know, whatever. But it's the how are you going to pay for it? Because, you know, there's not enough money. You know, one of the, one of the things that John will show you when he presents it when we meet is if you want to pay for all these things over that nine year period, you have to start putting away like half a million dollars at some point. And, you know, that's not going to happen, you know? So we have to go through, that's what we're proposing. We would like you to go through the select board and maybe with the dependent heads, definitely in terms of going through each of these items that are on the plan. How are you going to pay for all those? And working in these particular proposed building improvements and additions? So that's what we'd like you to kind of, you know, sign on for. And it's definitely an awful lot of work. This tool is gonna, I think, show very clearly that we don't have enough money to do all this stuff. So we're going to have to do some prioritization. And I think when you do that, you kind of, like John said, you have to look kind of far out. We've kind of been doing, you know, year to the year in terms of looking at capital improvements. And this is going to force us to look even further out. So we can plan for these expenses coming down the pipe. And I think that's all predicated on the fact of, one, what do we want to do with the town hall? Two, how do we want to proceed with the town office building? If those are things that we want to proceed with, there's some tough decisions we have to make going forward, so.
Absolutely.
So any other questions from anybody? Either one, we did a very good job or we totally baffled everybody and have no clue what we talked about. So I don't know where everybody is, but hopefully there are more of the former than the latter, but.
I think I had a pretty good, solid knowledge of the base, so that helps for me, I don't know about everybody else.
Well, you're cheating anyways because you were on the committee for a while. So you kind of know some of the stuff we're dealing with anyway, so.
Right, right.
But I would like to, and I've got my chairperson of the town hall renovation committee on. We've been meeting just about every week and sometimes a little bit more since we got this particular charge. And these people have put in an awful lot of work in terms of the meeting, but also in terms of off time. You know, they get homework almost all the time. Because I'm a mean person in terms of sharing, so I would like to give them. the, the credit that they're due in terms of all the work that they've done. So I would like to thank the committee for all their time and efforts.
Yes.
And that was just the beginning. Hopefully going forward, you'll have even more work to do. So, but thank you very much.
You're welcome. You're an incredible team. There's no question about it. And everyone brings such incredibly important pieces to this puzzle. So thank you.
Yep. All right.
Can I ask one more, one more thing I just want to put out on the table that I know we talked about briefly, but you know, the town hall opportunities, if it does get renovated for it helping to make some funds back. Even just to pay cost expense. I think we should just keep that in mind because it isn't a building that we need all the time. And there are a lot of needs for a large space. So just something to keep.
Yeah, that was, that was in our slide. I don't remember which number it was, but we talked about town and public use.
Yeah.
I think the committee was kind of enthused about that in terms of utilizing it for other things.
Yeah.
So yeah. Yeah, perfect. So I, I think that's something that the town should consider in terms of going forward. Have to deal with the insurance issues with that particular thing, but I think that's something that needs to be explored as well. So, and the other thing I think Ben touched on a little bit, but in terms of this whole concept in terms of alternative energy, I think one of the things the committee struggles with is they're looking for a direction from the select board in terms of that and some other summer key decisions. But one of the things is, you know, is there a solar array at town center? Is there a solar array someplace else? The other thing is in terms of geothermal. It's one of the things the middle school is doing big time. You know, is that something we need to look into? And I, I know it's expensive, but it cuts down your operating costs moving forward. So those are things we kind of need direction. Like if the select board was to come out and say, okay, we're going to do, you know, net zero or as close as we can get going forward, that gives us some direction. And also some other things that select board, we are looking for the select board to give us some in terms of direction. Cause there's kind of opportunities out there and we should take advantage of them if we can.
Absolutely.
Scott, that, that brings up why it's important to just plan it all together. If, if you're going to use ground source heat pumps and you're going to use vertical well bores for your to draw the heat from or, or exhaust it to a significant cost of drilling those bores is just the cost of getting that half a million dollar drill rig on site. But if you have to drill a new well for water anyway, you have to pay that cost anyway. And that second bore costs a whole lot less than the first one. So if you plan ahead, you don't drill one hole this year and another hole and a few more holes next year, you do them all at once.
Planning ahead, some of my favorite words put together.
So I know it's just you and I Katrin, but are you amenable to us meeting? And John referenced in terms of two weeks.
Yeah. Is there a reason that Carrie couldn't be on today? Or is, would he be able to listen to this call? Is it to be recorded? Is there some way?
I believe Julie is recording it so we can watch it after the fact.
I think that'd be great.
So let us schedule for two weeks from today at four o'clock. And the town hall renovation committee will present the CIFP. Those are the Capital Improvement Funding Plan. It's slightly different from the CIP, Capital Improvements Plan. Because we're going to go look at in terms of how much things cost and how we save for those particular things. But that's all predicated on, we all agreeing in terms of what those particular items are. There's some things in the Capital Improvements Plan, which the planning board does, which is great, that we might want to, you know, change in terms of how we fund it. Do we fund it at all? And what that particular funding number is. And one of the things that is definitely not in the CIP is all the buildings that we have in town. They should at least be on there so we don't lose track of them.
And that's towards some new ones today. We have a lot of other, yeah, other issues to deal with. That's for sure.
Yeah. So if you're amenable to that, let's set that for four o'clock, two weeks from today.
Perfect.
And you'll get that presentation as well. It's a pretty cool tool. John's done a very nice job in terms of doing the setup of it and configuring it. But it's going to become, at least in my opinion, it's going to become very obvious that we have so many things on that that we can't afford at this particular time. So we're going to have to do some hard work.
I like the idea of meeting with department heads too, and really kind of making a plan going forward to understand what, you know, the goal as a town together. So that we're, we're not leaving anyone out or not, you know, thinking ahead and that kind of stuff. I think that's really important.
Well, they're the ones closest to these particular projects. Like, you know, an addition on to the garage annex, the town garage annex, you know? Steve has information in that and he needs to share it with us. Can that be moved? How much does it cost? Those kinds of things. Those are the people that know those things. And we've identified certain projects in our current buildings that need, you know, some attention. So those people in those structures are the ones that know most about it. So they need to be involved in the process.
Yeah. And I love the idea of making sure we work with people that actually work in the town office to make sure that they're part of the planning because they're the ones who know what we need the most. So I really love that idea.
Plus it's got a, a double edged sword because then we can give them homework. Go check out this, can you?
You and your homework man.
Yeah, I'm, I'm nasty. I'm mean. So, all right. Anything else? Any other questions from anybody? No? I move to adjourn. Do I have a second? Katrin, it has to be you.
Oh, I'm so used to us being the, yes, yes, I second that motion.
Give that motion. All those in favor, say hi.
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 Nice to see you all.